Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dockery, second by Blackwell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Names? Ayes have it? Public comment, is there anybody who'd like to address the city councilman? Will you stand up and state your name?
Can I hand out these papers as well?
Thank you. These, these papers will be looked at a later time, they can't be looked at right now.
Sure.
Thank you.
Flip it up.
The, the lever up.
Okay, so Ashley Atkins, Eldridge, Iowa, 880 South First Street. I've been here before in regards to the easement issue, and it continues to be an ongoing issue. The first paper that you see there is my latest permit denial letter from Jeff Martin's. Sorry. Okay. This administration singly-handedly has threatened to get me fired from my job, threatened to bulldoze my building, and threatened to have two acres for sale in Eldridge. What I only know now is a continued harassment, violation of my rights, and intentional actions to create financial problems. The first document that you all have in your pocket is the latest permit denial. If you notice, there's not one planning or zoning code or Iowa law referenced. Instead, referenced is an easement issued as a dispute. Yet he also mentions in the letter that the city has no authority over civil issues. So then how can he deny a building permit based on a reason he has no authority over? Furthermore, the city has denied notified of Iowa law 564.4, which states that the landowner and the person disputing an easement, in this case, the neighbor, has three months to file a civil action. To date and four years later, this hasn't happened. Yet the city continues to deny me a building permit based on what they call a dispute with no regard to the law. Why is this being continued to be allowed? Specifically, the plat map clearly, for my deed, clearly illustrates and lists latitude and longitude coordinates showing the portion that has been legally recorded and dedicated for the city, to the city of Eldridge for street and developmental purposes when my property was subdivided in 2007. Iowa law 354.19, dedication of land states, and this is just a summary. An approved dedication of land for street purposes by the proprietors establishes an easement for public access, whether or not a deed has been recorded or the improvement of the street is complete. That states that he has the dedication of land in Iowa law, and there's also a dedication of land document in my deed that states the portion of the easement has been dedicated to the city of Eldridge for land and a lot of purposes and for public access. So why am I still being denied a building permit based on law? Based on zoning codes? To date and four years later, the city has never once referenced a code or a law that does not meet the standards or, and is not within his legal authority to do so. If you notice, he continues to state in these denying, these building denial, building denials, that it's outside of his authority, yet it's within his authority to deny it. To date, Mike Brishley and I have had multiple conversations, and essentially, he is strong-arming me for the easement because he wants, he needs my back acre in order to develop his, and I quote, "There's nothing for his financial gain to allow me to use the easement." And as long as the city continues to go against legal law, he doesn't have to take me to court. So I'm asked that this committee look at the documents and require that the city issue me a permit with my legal access easement. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wanted to address the councilman? Okay. We'll go on to 5A, consideration to approve the city councilments from the August 18, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Yossi, second by Blackwell to approve the councilments from August 18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Names? Ayes have it? 5B, consideration to approve bills payable. Anybody have any questions?
No questions, Your Honor.
Really? Anybody else?
Two in a row.
I know. Impressive.
I make a motion, will you approve the bills?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Campbell, second by Collins, approve bills payable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Names? Ayes have it? On to number six, old business. Consideration of the third and final reading of ordinance 2025-19, rezoning Revolve Farms' parcels from SA Suburban Agricultural to I-2 General Industrial. Before we vote, Jeff, has anybody called on this?
Uh, no, Your Honor, no comments.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
You got discussion?
Nope, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Blackwell, second. By Dockery. Roll call?
Collins?
Aye.
Dockery?
Aye.
Yossi?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
The third and final reading of ordinance 2025-19 passes. 6B, consideration of the third and final reading of ordinance 2025-20, rezoning RG Prime and Sloper Town LLC parcels from SA Suburban Agricultural to I-2 General Industrial. Jeff, can I call on you again?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We have not received any comments on this or the next couple of items until we get to F.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Second. Motion by Campbell, second by Yossi, to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 2025-20. Roll call?
Dockery?
Aye.
Yossi?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
The third and final reading of ordinance 2025-20 passes. 6C, consideration of the third and final reading of ordinance 2025-21, amending publishing requirements.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Campbell, second by Dockery, to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 2025-21, amending publishing requirements. Roll call?
Yossi?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Dockery?
Aye.
The third final reading of ordinance 2025-21, amending publishing requirements passes. 6D, consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2025-22, amending pool and spot fencing.
Make a motion there.
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Collins, to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-22, amending pool and spot fencing. Roll call?
Blackwell?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Dockery?
Aye.
Yossi?
Aye.
Second reading passes. On to 6E, consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2025-23, updating the city stop intersections.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Collins, second. By Campbell to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-23, updating city stop intersections. Roll call?
Campbell?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Dockery?
Aye.
Yossi?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
The second reading of ordinance 2025-23, updating city stop intersection passes. 6F, consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2025-24, defining electric scooters and setting regulations. Jeff, can I call on you for this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We received one critical email that was sent to all of the U Council members that you received based on information from ChatGPT. That's the only information that we've received on it, provision.
Thank you, Jeff.
Make a motion to approve it as a red.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Yossi, second by Collins, to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-24, defining electric scooters, setting regulations. Roll call?
Collins?
Aye.
Dockery?
Aye.
Yossi?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance 2025-24 passes. On to 7A, consideration to approve proposed amendment 28E agreement with the YMCA and NSCSD provision 20 liability insurance changing the requirement that each party must carry $10 million liability coverage to $5 million liability code. Nevada, can I call on you?
Thank you, Mayor. We received this proposed amendment to the 28E agreement between the YMCA, the North Scott School District, and the city regarding provision 20 liability insurance. The YMCA was informed by their current insurance agent that nonprofits are not able to write for anything over $5 million in umbrella insurance. I did check with Seth Porter and just got his feedback on it before bringing it to council. He did confirm that that is currently the insurance environment, and he doesn't have any recommendations on not amending based on the proposal from the YMCA. He did suggest that we require that the Y would procure a $10 million umbrella policy as soon as the insurance marketplace allows for that option. And he also recommended that we consider having the YMCA provide us with a list of the carriers that declines to offer the coverage above $5 million for as many years as that continues to go on. But otherwise, didn't have any recommendations against denying that proposal to change provision 20, which currently has $5 million for bodily injury per person and $10 million per occurrence for each of the three entities to carry, switching that to the $5 million for bodily injury per person and $5 million per occurrence. Questions on that?
So it's total, because we're all part of this, the total insurance for occurrences is $15 million aggregate amount between the three entities.
Correct, with the change, it would be 15.
That seems to be normal with umbrellas nowadays. Make a motion. Second.
Motion by Yossi, second by Blackwell, to approve the change from $10 million liability coverage to $5 million liability coverage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Names? Ayes have it? On to 7B, consideration of resolution 2025-25, approving final acceptance of public improvements for Ivy Acres Part 1 and Part 2. Jeff, can I call you after that?
Thank you, Mayor. All of the city departments have inspected sewer water, electric, and it's been reviewed by the city engineer. So we're ready to go ahead and accept the public improvements for Ivy Acres Part 1 and 2. There are a couple of contingencies that are in the resolution. Things that can't be finished really right at this point because they're going to be involved with future construction. But we wanted to make everyone aware of those and have that in writing that moving forward, those couple of items still need to be taken care of. In your packet, there was a typo towards the bottom. There was copy paste error that has been corrected to say Ivy Acres Part 1 and 2 now on the document that we sign this evening if it's passed. Jeff, the only question I have is in the original Ivy Acres Part 1, was there was supposed to be a temporary gravel road on the north end for access for emergency vehicles? And I know we extended, we drew that per units, but as that's filling in, should we also put that in there somewhere? Yeah, we have received a final plat for Ivy Acres Part 3 that'll go in front of the Board of Adjustment, or I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning Commission later this month. They are ready to proceed and connect that, the area that was supposed to be a gravel road to a concreted road, and they're ready to begin construction on that immediately.
Okay. So you're comfortable with not addressing it here?
Yeah, we've all discussed that at the staff level and with the city engineer, and we think that they'll, if it's not finished this fall, it'll be finished very early spring. They're already ordering sewer and water materials to do it.
That's pharmacy, it's concrete, not gravel, so that's probably obviously some done deal.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get a, an entrance in there.
Absolutely. Just no further discussion, like to make motion or approval?
Go here, second.
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Campbell to approve resolution 2025-25, approving the final acceptance of public improvements for Ivy Acres Part 1 and 2. Roll call?
Dockery?
Aye.
Yossi?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-25 passes. On to 7C, consideration of resolution 2025-26, approving a city sponsorship of Lewis Machine and Tool Application for High Quality Program with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Nevada, can I call on you?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff and I were approached by a representative with IEDA and a representative from LMT to discuss an application for the High Quality Jobs Program from LMT to the state for the expansion of their current facility to include a plating and coating operation. The application deadline for the IEDA is September 22. We talked a little bit about what that expansion was going to look like, what the application would include, and agreed that we would take it in front of the council for consideration tonight in this resolution, which would include the council considering whether they would sponsor the IEDA application from LMT as the local public agency, and also to commit the required local matching of funds. For us, I believe originally, they were looking at trying to set up a second development agreement with the TIF. The expansion is on the current development that's in the original development agreement that LMT has, which is still in place and has five years left. So there is no opportunity to do a second development agreement. Also, that TIF is going to expire in 2030, so by the time that those improvements were assessed, they would only get, at the most generous sunset of that TIF, one year maybe of assessed value on any agreement. We did talk to our bond counsel with Aylers and Cooney, and we were able to determine that we would be able to increase the cap on their current development agreement, and the state confirmed that that would meet their local requirement match, and that we could look at $60,000 as our local match in increasing their current cap on their development agreement by $60,000, in which the IEDA would then provide a $300,000 forgivable loan at the state level as well as their state tax incentives. Current development agreement for LMT was a 10-year, 80% increment tax rebate with a cap of $1,331,250. The current assessed value, what we're paying at the 10 years, if we gave them the 80% for the full 10 years of their agreement, it would be $1.4 million, so they'd be over their cap. If we increased it by $60,000, we'd still be under that 80% TIF increment rebate of the original 10-year scale based on their current cap of $1.3 million. So if we go ahead and amend that development agreement to increase their cap by just the $60,000 to be able to sponsor their application, we're still going to be paying less than what the full 80% increment of their original 10-year agreement would have been. This expansion is looking at bringing about 34 additional jobs and producing about $180,000 in tax revenue per year. Any questions?
Just a comment, thanks for going through all this. I had a discussion with this afternoon. Bottom line is, if we go through this, we're basically, if we modify the current agreement, we're extending that basically by six months. It's still going to be under the numbers that's already in the first agreement, total numbers. So to me, this is a win-win for us. Am I correct in that, Nevada?
They'd still be paid under the 10 years that's in their agreement, but it'd be about six months of what their current payment is at by the assessed value without any additional improvements from the expansion, so.
This is about $6 million, and. Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, the agreement that's in place, the net effect will seem to be about six months additional, but it will still be within the original 10-year period.
Correct.
It's also worth noting that this is a good way to celebrate some of their growth. I think they just received a $93 million contract over 10 years. So that's huge, that's our backyard. That ultimately is going to repay Eldridge in many different ways.
That's one way to look at it, but you could look at, if they just got a $93 or $92 million contract, why do we need to put $60,000 in? No, this, this is a win-win, I think, for us and the taxpayers. And they've been really good neighbors to us, and they've been good to work with us, too. So even in the development program and the timing, we've had no issues with them. They've done everything we've asked them to.
Nevada and I had a discussion this afternoon as well. I had similar thoughts and questions, so with that, after the $92 million contract from the government, but look at everything with this, it's obvious it's no rater, you know, for us as a community and also for them as a local business. So I totally, totally support it. So thank you for the clarity, Nevada. Appreciate you.
If there's no other questions, I.
Mayor, can I ask a point of interest, please? The $60,000, is that TIF dollars with this agreement, or is that $60,000 our funds?
We would be amending their development agreement that they currently have in the TIF and just increasing the cap of their 10-year rebate by $60,000. So instead of the $1.3 million cap, we'd be at, we'd add $60,000 to that.
To the TIF dollars?
To their TIF rebate.
So no source into amending our local funds here at this point?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, I make a motion to approve resolution 2025-26 as presented.
Motion by Dockery, second by Campbell to approve resolution 2025-26. Roll call?
Yossi?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Dockery?
Aye.
Mayor, thank you.
On to 7E, consideration to approve budgeted purchase of a spare lift station pump on Buttermilk Lift Station from Mississippi Valley Pump in the amount of $28,178.
So moved.
Go here, second. Motion by Dockery, second by Blackwell. All those in favor say aye.
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 Names? The ayes have it? On to 7E, consideration to approve and the installation of a permanent speed bump on Diamond Drive with the estimate cost of $9,500. Is that calling you?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. As we talked about previously with the speed issues on Diamond Drive, this is just the proposed location of the permanent speed hump. Right now, Tony Rup has the signs on order for the speed hump, so once he gets those and they put the temporary speed hump up there in the meantime, but then this is the kind of location, the proposal for the permanent concrete speed hump, and then with an estimated cost of $9,500 for it. So here, we're placing it kind of between Donahue and Davie Street is where I'm proposing to put it.
And so when would the permanent one be in then, Zach?
I guess that's a question for council. If we want to do the temporary one, the temporary one would have to come out for the winter time, so Tony would have to take it out probably before, you know, early December or sometime before the first snow. And we could plan on this one going in first thing next spring. Or if we wanted to, we could try to get it done yet this year. Send it out to get some quotes and see if we have time to get it done this year, so.
Is there any concerns, Zach, if it were to be put in with soft coercion? Is the best a way to the spring possible?
Might not be a bad idea to give the concrete more time to cure depending on if we get an early snow and whatnot. It's not snowing this winter.
Can I quote you on that? Not beyond access.
My opinion is, I think we still need to put the temporary one in to make sure that is the right location.
Yeah, that's so, I think it might not be a bad idea to use the temporary throughout the fall and see how it performs, get some feedback from, you know, police and kind of residents in the area. And then if it seems to be working well in that location, then we could go with the permanent one this spring.
Permanent one, it sounds. Or, you know, if it doesn't work at all, people just still fly over it, you know, we might go to Plan B, whatever that is, with a squad car. But, no, I think at some point, if we put the temporary in and see, make sure it's working the way we think it's going to work, and then we can come back and put a permanent one in at that location or modify it slightly.
I would agree with you. I would like to see what the temporary does first. I mean, if we have no intentions realistically of putting it in a permanent one this fall, what's the point on voting for it right now if it can change by spring? So I'd just rather see what it does and we have the winter to stew on it. Do we, do we go ahead and make a motion to vote with this price? So it's set, knowing that, knowing that right now, it's not going to be a permanent one?
We probably wouldn't send it out.
Doesn't matter because the prices are going to change.
There's no action on it, yeah.
Okay, good, that's very.
All right. Due to interest in the temporary one right now, there would be no action taken on the permanent one. We'll move on to eight. Board and Staff Activism Board, Nevada, I'll call on you first.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick things. We do have the July financial accounts have been reconciled, so we are working on preparing to close out the fiscal year. Everything looks good as of right now. Our SQR funds, we've sunsetted the program for the residents. We are looking at getting an estimate for Crandall Park and then Elma Green Park based on the direction of the council back in June to use up the remaining $8,400 that we have for the SQR. We've already done the final walkthrough for the streambank stabilization and the permeable paving, so that program will be ready to be closed out as soon as we expend the rest of those SQR funds. The 16th Avenue Water Tower Project, I sent a newsletter out to everybody last week. ISG is going to be providing those newsletter updates about every two weeks. There's also a rendering available for anybody who wants to see what the tower's going to look like when it's painted. They've decided on a Castle Gray for the lower portion of the bowl, and then the Eldridge in a Lucidov Calligraphy and Cursive-type font. So we can get that rendering sent out if anybody wants to see that. I think it's been on Facebook as well. Aylers and Cooney is going to be hosting a webinar on October 3 from 12 to 1:30 over the mandatory training for Iowa open meetings and public records laws for all newly elected officials. If there's any elected officials from the council that would like to participate in that, let me know. It is $25 per registrant with a $200 max per entity. So if anybody's interested in taking that training, let me know, we can get you registered. We had our Founders Edition kickoff meeting on Friday, September 5. Preliminary design plans should be ready in early November. Final plans and bid docs at the end of December, and bidding for Phase 1 sometime around January of 2026. South First Street paving started this week, and that should be finished up with that portion within approximately a week. And for the traffic signal project, Valentine is doing the curb ramps this week. We'll do a final walkthrough when they're done with that. That will essentially be the end of their work on this project, and then we will be waiting, the signal masks are still estimated to arrive in October, I believe. And then finally, Klein Sewer and Drain was clearing an obstruction in one of our sewer mains and did some damage to that today. That's just going to require about 20 feet of replacing for the sewer main on 5th Street. So that's going to be closing tomorrow from Leclerc to Davenport after the morning school traffic. It should be reopened by 3:00 PM, hopefully. It'll be gravel only, and then looking to do concrete replacement sometime within the next one to two weeks. This is at the expense of the contractor, not to the city.
Try to move the middle of the street, too.
Yep. That's all we've got.
For clarification, South First Street, the main line will be done likely by the end of Friday, but then they're going to still have all the side streets.